What day did you send the? Budget on? Or did you send, you didn't send it to no one, did you?
No, um, let me look back and see what the last one was that I said.
I had it open and now I've got it closed and now that's getting me. Yeah. Seven nine, I believe.
Um, seven twenty-six was the most recent one.
Okay.
You're ready? Okay, I'm gonna call meeting order, start with pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the flag, states of America, to the republic which stands one nation, and they got indivisible liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mockler, Packard, here, Smith, here, Manning's absent, Hammond.
Here.
Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing on approve agenda with added right away application.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing on roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Smith, yes, Packard, yes, Mockler.
Yes, motion passes, approve minutes.
Move to approve.
Second. A motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing on roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Smith, yes, Packard, yes. Mockler.
Yes, motion passes, are there any visitors to be heard? Push your step. Have a seat wherever. Uh, Rod, we'll do the fuel quotes.
Morning.
Morning. Did everybody get to see the fuel quotes?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Looks like.
I don't have it up, so.
Looks like Volan Oil is the chief at two thirty-seven five.
I'll move to approve the Volan Oil was low bid.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? And we have all their, since they're a new vendor, Rod, we have all their information.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
We haven't received the bill yet. No, nothing on the fuel.
Okay. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Smith, yes, Packard, yes, Mockler.
Yes, motion passes, bridge closer, closure.
Yeah, we talked about it last week. Um. That structure they recommend, we move it down to three ton, but like we talked about, three ton really isn't adequate for vehicles anymore. So. I guess if I recommend we close it, I guess. According, you know, with Johnson Engineering, critical finding anyway. And if you need, I can get a letter. Uh, stating that from Johnson's if you want.
And this is on three oh seven, correct, Rod?
Right, over the Vermillion River.
Yep.
Right on the, um. I guess by the old Wasslin place. He used to Bob Greg wires. Farm up there, so minimal traffic, very minimal.
Yeah, it's essentially a dirt road.
Right.
West of there at least.
Last couple of years it was underwater.
Yeah.
So.
I'd say. Move to approve the closure of the road.
Oh, second, oh, I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, you mean the closure of the bridge, right?
That's what I mean is, yes.
Yeah.
I think it's just for safety.
Yeah.
It has to be done.
Anything else? Hearing on roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Smith, yes, Packard, yes, Mockler.
Yes, motion passes. Anything else, Rod?
Um, were you able to add, uh?
Oh, yeah.
Clean and electric.
Yep, the right away application.
Yeah, I would, I wouldn't have asked, but, um, they wanted do it next week and we don't have a meeting till the thirty-first and it's, I guess I kind of considered it would be emergency so they could get water to the cow, to the cattle. And I, I recommend that you approve it if it's possible.
I'd love to approve that.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing on roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Smith, yes, Packard, yes, Mockler.
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you, that's everything I have.
Thanks, Rod. Grace, will you be a visitor to be heard or?
Yes, yeah, sorry, just flew in from the school car.
If you can use the microphone, as long as the button is up. The red button, there you go, you're on.
Good morning, my name is Grace Freeman and I want to be a visitor that talks today. Do I talk right now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so I'm not real up to date on what's going on with the cannabis in our county, but as a nurse and a grower, um, and a anyway, I like to hear what you guys are thinking and I can add comments as needed. Um, I can also provide research as needed, um, I am going to a growers conference in Mission at the end of August and so and, and as a nurse, I part of my continuing ed for my Minnesota license is doing their course on medical marijuana and, um, and in part of my history as an integrative health nurse, I did a masters through Minnesota and that was one of the main points of research was on medical marijuana, so there's a lot of research out there, a lot of growers going on in Kentucky, University of Kentucky Extension, Vermont, um, you know, and a lot of the western states, so there's lots of research out there and South Dakota is just kind of getting more and more behind, um, the ball, so I would like, I just want to find out where, where, where you guys are at with it and understand your questions about it and see if I can help at all.
So at nine forty Drew is on here with medical marijuana.
Okay. I don't know who Drew is.
He's applying in zoning.
Okay.
So maybe, maybe you'll have questions then if you have time.
Yeah, yeah, I could go change, I just really ran.
Yeah, you're not on camera.
But the garden looks great, sand. Okay. Is that all we need me for right now?
Right now.
Okay, then come back at nine forty?
We, well, I would leave.
Oh, you don't, you don't want me to change?
You're fine.
Oh, Grace, Grace, you look, you look great.
Your hair is well braided.
Yes, yeah, you, you look great from here, Grace.
We are ahead a little bit, but, um.
I have my work clothes on too, so.
There are two people here with the National Park Service, I don't know which one is Mills. And then you are, what it, Dugan Smith?
Yeah, my name is Milltar, I'm acting superintendent right now for the park, the normal superintendent, taking another job at the regional office, so I'm here from Badlands helping out for what they call a detail, about to exceed a hundred and twenty days. One of the things that has come up, I thought I would ask the commissioners about is a a few years ago, I think it was twenty eighteen, there's a program called FLAT, Federal Land Access Program. You can apply for funds for, to improve roads or facilities to help provide the public better access to federal lands. And that, that in twenty eighteen, they put in a proposal, I think the county agreed to it and, and the township, Norway Township to, uh, to resurface, it's a mile and a half of Myron Grove gravel road to resurface it to asphalt. And this application was submitted in twenty eighteen and it's been approved for construction here in twenty twenty-three. So the project, whole project cost was estimated at nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. Usually the federal highway administration picks up like eighty percent of it and then they ask the cooperative to pick up twenty percent. In this case, the National Park Service said they kick in the twenty percent matching funds, which is a hundred and sixty thousand and the federal highways is contributing for seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Well, the project is now, you know, scheduled for twenty twenty-three and we were in contact with the Norway Township, Calvin Hansen. And he, um, Kevin told us that the township isn't interested because the, the federal highways will build the road, but then it belongs to the township or the county in this case. So you would have the, the long-term maintenance so that, and Calvin said that, uh, that the county, well, he spoke for the township, but he was also speaking for the the county too, that they weren't interested in, in the project because of the long-term maintenance cost. But I wanted to make sure that was right.
That's not correct.
Okay, that's, I, I thought we need something official if that was the case.
Right.
And, um, so the county remains interested in, in this.
We are, it's a township road, they would have to give it to us.
Okay.
We can't, I don't want to take it from them.
Okay.
So I would have to, we'd have to be in contact with that township.
Okay, but if the county remains interested, uh, um, I guess I would contact the township.
Right.
They'd be willing to turn it over.
Yeah.
It would be nice to have the, the road paved and I talked to the highway engineer. You know, the long-term costs, you know, and then on the near term wouldn't be so much as you thought. There you have every three to five years crack ceiling and every five to seven, you know, um, crack ceiling and striping every three to five. He said to mention that, uh, you know, uh, it's built to higher federal highway standards, so it should be a good road, not just for, uh, chip seal over gravel road, it's gonna be good stand, a good road. All right, it's nice though that you still be interested in, I'll let the federal highways administration know and I'll see if I can contact the supervisors or for the townships, if they'd be willing and should somebody from the county.
I'll contact also.
All right.
Rod, are you still on?
Sort of.
Yep, I am now.
Did, did you hear all of that?
No, not, I, I just heard that it is still scheduled for twenty twenty-three, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, so if we were to we would end up taking over that, would you say mile and a half?
Yeah, it's a mile and a half. It's kind of the gravel road's kind of poor condition and, you know, the park service, you know, better access to the river for the public is what we're about. So we'd like to see it happen, so the park service is willing to contribute a hundred and sixty-one thousand to the cost.
So does the, the parking lot down there, does that get paid also?
The parking lot doesn't, that own, is owned by its, um, gay fishing parks. And they're not gonna, they, they won't pay parking lots anymore, it's just be the road.
Yeah, the, the parking lot, I, I mean, I use it frequently because I'm a kayaker, a regular river kayaker and, uh, you know, the parking lot's not, not so bad, the road. The road is, is, is bad enough, a lot of people don't want, don't want to go on it.
Yeah.
It's brutal on trailers.
I was just asking because that's the question I get all the time.
Yeah, we just, we just, seriously, we just finished a study with Iowa State University on the conceptual design of do, with the state of South Dakota redo that Myron Grove area. Making better access, better parking there, like, you know, vault toilets, things like that. So that has been done also trying to build better access, better recreation for people who go down and use that Myron Grove.
Yeah, trying to improve it, unofficially, the efficient process, I should say.
Yeah. No, no, but there may be some different surfing mystery.
Are they gonna widen the boat ramp or anything, is there anything like that?
Um, I don't think that area's talked to us mostly how to get down there and parking and some trails, things like that. Uh, conceptual designs will work with them, you know, secure finding the future, trying to, the designs, what we can use there, so. That first has been taken to, to, to improve that area.
When do we have to let you know? Or when do we need to sign, I should say?
Um, I'll ask the federal highways.
Okay.
Yeah, well, it's good to know that you're still interested and we'll move ahead, I'll contact the federal highways, contact them next, exactly what the deadline would be and tell them that the, uh, what needs to happen next is the township would need to agree to turn the roadway through. And then we're gonna check to see.
So how far down exactly will that road go? Paid.
Okay, that button up there.
Okay.
I got the it's on the plan. See if there's a map with it.
Is there any reason the township wouldn't agree, being we're in agreement to take it over and leaves them of any responsibility for it, so.
There's a campground that wants to go in down there and I don't think they want it.
They don't want it?
They don't want it, and this road would give it a good access.
Yeah.
So.
That doesn't make sense. Okay.
Rod, are you seeing any problem with this? I mean, it's gonna be another mile and a half more work and money for you out of your budget, but.
Uh, no, I guess not, I mean, like he stated, if it's built the federal specs, it's gonna be a good road. I don't know what we have to do at the state to add it to our inventory. But I'm, I'll email peer and find out.
Okay.
But I know one thing that the township has to ask us to take it over, so.
Norville, no, we are consensus wise, we are. And Dick, are you consensus wise, you're okay with it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mile and a half, doesn't show very well.
That's fine, I just, it's the unbuttoned one, I'm unstoppable.
I'll leave. We can get one.
If you just email. And then let her know also the date.
Yeah.
That we need to sign.
All right.
Fixer. I think there's more argument if we tried to refuse.
Yeah, but, I mean, it's, it's the township's road, they have, they have to be okay with it first.
Yep, and if they've asked Rod to take it over, that we'd take it over, that seems positive also.
No, they haven't asked him.
Oh, I thought you said that they had, oh. Bananas in you.
Do you guys have anything else?
So we'll follow up, I'll get a, a date. I'll get a date and send that to Carrie with the information and I'll try to reach out to Norway Township and do the same and let's see if we can move ahead.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Dr. Standage? If you, you just want to use all.
Yeah, I've got it.
Thank you. Thanks.
I'll free.
Yeah.
Good morning, can you hear me? Did I, is that on?
Yep.
Um. I'm gonna do something just a little bit different today because, um, there have been a lot of changes in the last couple of years regarding mental health services and particularly in terms of, of residential crisis care and detox. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a little background and then I'm gonna talk about that and really talk most, um, uh, specifically about the significance of those changes to the counties. So, you know, Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health Services served seven counties in southeastern South Dakota, Clay County is one of the counties that we served. Of the about five thousand people that we served, um, last year of six hundred and seventy or six hundred and seventy-two of those individuals were Clay County residents. That, the, the vast, um, majority of our services are provided through either contracts with the state or Medicaid. And it's important they understand that we, grants went away in nineteen eighty, I mean, so there, there is no such thing as grants. A lot of what we do is really work with the state to bring contracted services for individuals who need behavioral health services and particularly indigent people who need behavioral health services in the seven counties that, that we serve. That, um, we, we provide an array of services, um, outpatient services, children and service, children and youth services. We provide what we call care services, which are services to individuals, when I started in this business, we're largely at the Human Services Center. Their individuals with severe and persistent mental illness who are in the community, mostly living in low income, uh, housing and we provide medication support and, and case management and those kinds of things. They are more, more and, and we provide outpatient substance use treatment. More recently, we added inpatient substance use treatment, uh, we have a twenty bed inpatient, twenty-eight day inpatient, um, treatment program. We have a detox service and more recently we've added a crisis bed. That last year for Clay County, that, um, and, and this is crisis services where we're, we're seeing people the same day, usually because of suicide. That we dealt with forty-seven, um, different instances, we did nine certifications for, for the boards of mental illness and then we had fourteen days, um, in crisis care. That, what I want you to understand is that, um, we, we've needed some form of detox in this area of the state for twenty, thirty years, ever since I've been, um, involved. And, um, it just wasn't possible because we don't have the numbers to support a freestanding detox. So we, we worked with the state for many, many years in order to get an inpatient substance use treatment program so we could support a detox service. That's, that's how we ended up having, um, detox. More, more recently, um, and this goes back to two thousand and nineteen when the tornado hit the, the Sioux Falls. There were no inpatient beds available, we were being told, for example, if, if you had somebody in Clay County and they were certified as needing inpatient care because they're a danger to themselves or others, they were, they were telling us that we would have to go to Regional West, Rapid City or Omaha or someplace for that individual. Well, as a part of that, we were able to negotiate with the state to turn a couple of our beds in their inpatient treatment unit into crisis beds. And so going back to two thousand and nineteen, we started that on a, on a small basis. And then this last April, because of changes in legislation, we were identified as an appropriate regional facility. So we can now hold people who are on that five-day commitment because of, um, emergency services. The, the, the thing that I, that I want, um, our counties to understand is that, and the significance for that is that we're doing detox for Clay County residents at no cost to Clay County. Um, historically, the state had always considered that as a county responsibility. And that's why you have detox in Sioux Falls and Rapid City because the counties have essentially run those, those services. But our small, smaller counties just can't do that, you, you just don't have the resources to do that. So that's significant, the, the, the crisis bed or having the appropriate regional facility is another thing that's really significant for counties because the first time the state is stepping in and contracting with us to support those first five, six or seven days, the free hearing commitment days which were, have always been a county responsibility. So if you would send somebody to McKinnon on that five-day hold, you're talking about six hundred dollars a day or whatever, you're talking about the emergency room cost, you're talking about the cost for a hearing, if it goes to a hearing, if you send them to HSC, it's six hundred dollars admission fee and the hearing costs and all of those kinds of things. And so, so, um, though, all of those things are just, um, really in the beginning stages, we have the ability to, to do that. But I want you to know that and, and I'm also asking for county support and supporting us in really, um, expanding those services and making that happen. Our vision, um, going forward is to have a receiving center so that individuals who are in crisis have a place to go. Um, right now, for somebody that's indigent, there is no voluntary option, uh, for if somebody is a danger to themselves or someone else. And so we want to have a voluntary option, so if somebody, you know, is a danger to themselves or others, they don't have insurance and they say, I do want help though, you don't have to go through the commitment process, so. Um, and, and we're, we're gonna be working with the legislature this year to get some funding to, to expand our crisis care service to because, because what we deal with right now is that we get full, we have four beds essentially, we get full and, and we don't have any place to go, but but so, so that's really what I wanted to focus on, help you understand. Today, I'm here for questions, I am asking for your continued financial support, like we're asking our counties for a three percent increase and you guys are at twenty three thousand, twenty-two thousand something, so, so it'd be like a twenty-three thousand dollar contribution. It, your contribution is a very small part of our budget, but it is what gives us the ability to do things and leverage dollars from the state, so, um, I, again, I want, uh, asking for your continued support. And wish us luck.
Thank you, does anybody have any questions for Dr. Standage?
It's fabulously needed and glad it's going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Let's see, Drew, are you ready? Let's see, Drew, are you ready? I'm gonna love her case first.
You guys get the memo for kind of well, for. Like I said, there wasn't much information. There was a point of contact that I was given, but that person never returned any phone calls or anything. I think the point of contact was the landlord for the person lived, but they never got back to me. There might be some assets out there, but how we identify him or track him down, no idea. And this is for the funeral home that's already taking care of the service, so for the cremation in this case.
I don't know if I saw that.
It's in the packet. Well, I guess just to get things started, I move approval.
Are we approving?
The the nineteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second it. Further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Muckler.
Yes, motion passes.
Am I on the right page? For the, because it's also says Salvation Army and Wakanda Ministerial is the nineteen fifty. And then. Yeah. Yeah. And, okay, I was on the wrong page. No. Poor. So what page should I be looking at?
It's just, it's just part of the packet.
Yeah.
We're not doing the budget.
Yeah, this week's packet.
We're doing a welfare case.
Sorry. Missed that.
So the nineteen hundred dollars this way. Or they've never, they have, I mean, this budget time, so they've never asked either, have they? The nineteen hundred dollars is gonna be for next year also, correct? Since they never asked to up it.
Right.
Sounds good.
They they asked, mentioned trying to raise that.
Not to me.
They had to be. Next year, when that came around, I was gonna try to bring that up. I think we're one of the lowest in this part of the state at least for that.
You guys usually set the fee for that in January, the first meeting.
Sir, I think that last January, this was enough to cover the cremation expenses, but not direct burial, is that, do I remember that correctly?
Yeah, I can't remember what the burial costs were, but.
Quite a bit more.
Yeah, quite a bit.
Yeah, they were like four or five hundred dollars more.
Okay, medical marijuana.
Or maybe to start for for benefit, kind of, or and kind of refresh everybody where we're at. So medical marijuana passed, didn't get challenged in court. It was supposed to be implemented July first. Like mid-June, South Dakota Department Health said, hold up, hold up, we don't have the regulations ready yet. Can everybody wait until October twenty ninth? Can we get our rules ready? So we have to put a moratorium in place, saying no medical marijuana until South Dakota Department Health put out their rules. Last week, South Dakota Department Health said, oh, by the way, we're gonna get done a month early now. So we kind of changed our timeline on when we can get stuff done. So the South Dakota Planners Association put out both the language for the moratorium and then two, three weeks ago, put out a copy of what they thought the regulations should look like. They weren't very. They were lacking a little bit. I don't say they're poor, but I think they kind of rushed, I I just don't know, it wasn't very good. So our organization that we contract with for planning to donate support, Sea Dog, had a copy of Mitchell's proposed marijuana, medical marijuana ordinance. We took that, Seagull and I passed a bunch of drafts around and took Sea Cogs and South Dakota Planners, so, uh, Mitchells and South Dakota Planners Association kind of meshing together, and that's the copy of what I gave you there. A lot of the things in that Mitchell medical marijuana ordinance were already in conflict with the evolving Department Health rules. Just about every two, three weeks, month, they seem to come out with a new one. Yes, yes, city of Mitch, city of Mitchells, yeah, yeah. Where there was conflict or potential conflict, we stripped out and said self, you know, state law or South Dakota Department Health rules, just keeping it in line. That's the bulk of what this is saying. There's some stuff in the application that might be not what the state wants. But it's, it's, they don't have any guidance for that. We could elect to have a higher standard than what the state recommends. However, as state law is gonna be changing between now and October third. And then the legislature is gonna pass some laws potentially in November, again, changing everything. My recommendation would be we just stick with what the state's telling us to do. Or follow what the state's gonna have. For example. Second, you're about like security cameras and windows and doors and what kind of security setup you have around the facility. That's changed every draft that's come along, like, do you have to have onsite storage or offsite storage for the data? Put whatever the state rules are. Because again, I think those are gonna change a lot as they go along. There's also in here, early on, there was stuff on insurance. And then the assumption was that nobody would insure a medical marijuana facility. But according, I called the South Dakota Department of Labor Insurance Division. They said they think you could get insurance, but literally nobody's asked them. So I I got this insurance requirement in there and some of you have more like business experience and stuff like that. I don't know if we should keep that in there or not. I just don't know. So that got left in, but I got like hashed, crossed out.
Financial provider.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the same question I've been, I just don't.
What kind of insurance?
Commercial liability, I was, but, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I I I think, I think you're on to a really, really good question and we might want to look at some other states. You know, regulations on on insurance, because in terms of insurance and banking, it's a really, really hard road for these organizations. And I I know that a great many of them now bank through credit unions because they're able to. They're not able to bank through the regular banking system. And 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 and, you know, it it's just, we still have these, you know, antiquated, antiquated laws that make that impossible. I know from a lobbyist for the national insurance industry that they've been trying to figure out how to do this. Because they, you know, I'm sorry, national banking, banking industry, they've been trying to figure out how to do this because they were losing, you know, tens of billions of dollars a year in in business to small, small credit unions.
And the difference between like the commercial liability for, let's say, somebody slips and falls on your property versus insurance for the product. There is national insurance theoretically out there for the product and it's not, you can get it in South Dakota, but it's not regulated by the state.
Yeah, I think this is probably a pretty easy question to ans- to answer. The state, state insurance people should probably know that.
Why do we care if we have insurance?
Good question, good question.
Because they might not, so.
I asked why we care, what kind of insurance they have covering their product.
Because it says they're a responsible citizen.
Responsible citizen, site cleanup.
I have no idea what kind of insurance you have in your house. You have no idea what kind of insurance I have in my house.
No, but when you have certain licenses, you have to at least have a proof of insurance. It doesn't say how much or whatever, but.
But I'm still kind of wondering why we care if they insure their contents. I think we're getting too, I don't want to get too far into the weeds on this, I'm just.
Yeah, it it's also kind of a moot point, because the state requires us to give out at least one license. And if we require insurance and nobody can get it, then, you know, we're kind of in an impasse. I mean, I, it just seemed, it seems like a moot point, yeah.
The next question, proof that at least one principal officer is a resident of Clay County, South Dakota. Sea Cog did not know if that would be legal. I don't know, state attorney would have any thought on that.
Has the state's attorney general given a media opinion yet? Is he busy?
I have not seen any, I've not seen any direction come from the Attorney General's office on this, so I will engage in that, I like to think that nothing else, my position in our association would be in the loop on communication in that regard, and I've seen nothing. I can reach out to them and ask that question. I think what I need to do is begin to make a list of questions like this that I need to research, I need to follow up with colleagues about. The insurance one is is an interesting inquiry to me. And my first thought on that is that we're permitting here. So do we require any type of liability insurance or something to that effect for alcohol permits? So, okay. Yeah. So, a- and then I wanted to look into that, because I was doing a cursory search as you guys were talking about that. I wanted to follow up on that because there were some, you know, like I I found, and this is liquor liability insurance certificate regarding some licensure application requirements for Minnesota. So and then commercial license for medical marijuana dispensaries in Oklahoma and elsewhere. This, you know, here we have a liability insurance minimum of a one million dollars in aggregate policy limit. So for the, for a municipal entity. So I I do want to, I mean, if that's a standard that someone is using, I want to make sure. And if nothing else, that it doesn't become a nuisance or who does clean up after the property if there's a fire or if there's what what are those requirements like any other business? But I would agree, I want to treat them differently necessarily, just for the sake of things. But, so we've got insurance and.
Because we're just talking about dispensary right now. This isn't the manufacturing.
Well, I, but it doesn't, this this ordinance covers all marijuana licensing.
Just for dispensaries.
You're both right, it covers all, but we only grant you one license.
Yeah, and and I I really want to have a discussion on that and I'd like to bring Grace into that discussion. And I I'd like to begin by just telling you that I've had a lot of personal experience. My sister had stage four cancer. And it really looked like she was terminal. And it was medical marijuana in the state of Washington that was provided for her by a nurse with oncology experience who ran a dispensary, but also manufactured, right? So what she did was she created specific marijuana extracts so that she could just have a few drops under her tongue every morning. While she went through chemo and then on days that she had chemo, when she would be expected to be very weak and nauseous and unable to eat. She had already lost, you know, an alarming amount of weight. She had a higher dose. And because of that, she survived. And this nurse with a specialization in medical marijuana for oncology had an enormous amount of experience. And my sister is alive today. And I'll tell you the second experience, which was very personal, it was with my husband, who had had Parkinson's disease for, at the time he started taking medical marijuana in California. He had had it for about twenty years. And had dyskinesia. And if you know what dyskinesia looks like, when you see people with Parkinson's, if they're just shaking, right, that's Parkinson's. But if they're doing this and they can't talk, that's dyskinesia. And it is extremely disabling. It does not allow you to walk or talk or eat or hold a cup of coffee. And medical marijuana that was created specifically for people with Parkinson's allowed him to live a relatively normal life until he died. And you can see this online, if you go to YouTube and you put in Larry Smith, medical marijuana, you will see the video that was incorporated into the film Ride with Larry that's available on on Amazon Prime. And it's, you know, been watched by thousands and thousands of people. And it makes a remarkable difference. And he was able to live a normal life. So I guess my point is, the point I want to make, is that allowing a dispensary means that you're allowing a a product that's very standardized to be sold in a retail establishment. And that product might have been made anywhere. But it's very standardized. That's very different from going to a nurse and saying, I'm having this kind of chemo. And I need a very specific kind of marijuana to help me get through this. Same thing with epilepsy. There's a lot of research now on epilepsy. And there's a very specific product that can be, you know, made in a laboratory, manufactured and put into an extract or a pill or whatever that helps people with certain kinds of epilepsy. You know, in the medical literature, there are actually, you know, case studies. People were having three hundred seizures a day who stopped seizing. So if we only allow a dispensary, you know, yes, a lot of people will get relief from pain without using opioids. People will be able to sleep without using narcotics, right? I mean, there are a lot of things for which marijuana is is a very gentle remedy. And those people will get relief. But the people who I think really need it the most, they need that compounded. And disallowing that in this county makes it extremely difficult for those people.
What are we disallowing?
Disallowing manufacturer? Yeah. Yeah, so Grace is an expert on this in a way that I'm not.
But that compound is already available, correct? Somebody's already making that.
No.
Your, your sister?
Yeah, but but that was compounded specifically for her in where she lived, right? So you can't, you can't cross state lines with this stuff, right? So if if you can't do it locally, you don't do it. You don't get it. If you can't get it locally, you can't get it. The other problem is that. You can cross county lines, yeah, within the state. But who who is gonna do this, right? And I mean, I I would like Grace to speak to what the, you know, the the reasons that it makes a difference to have a nurse, for example, doing the growing. I mean, there are different strains and different strains that are grown to different things. And so you've got to have somebody who understands the strains, who understands the chemistry and who understands the disease. So it's a little bit like having a local physician. You wouldn't want to have to go to Flandrew Indian Reservation every time you wanted a doctor. And in the same way, you wouldn't want to have to go to Flandrew Indian Reservation and hope that there was somebody there who knew what they were doing in order to get medical marijuana that was compounded for your, you know, your health, for your health problem, for your disease. So, you know, for my husband, you know, somebody had given him some marijuana. And, you know, he had this sort of standard, and it 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 basically. And, you know, he had this sort of standard and it, it basically just put him to sleep, right? He got high. That was a miserable experience for him. That was not what he wanted. What he wanted was relief from dyskinesia. If you have somebody who understands the chemistry and understands the growing and understands the strains, you know, and, and has an extraction machine, you know, and this, this person actually was available to him in California. And we found out about him from another person who had Parkinson's disease. Who was, he since died, as my husband has, but he was a lawyer, a practicing lawyer in, in Los Angeles and, you know, working every day and nobody knew he had Parkinson's. So, you know, it does, it makes an enormous difference. So, so think of it like having a physician in your community as opposed to, you know, driving a few hundred miles and working with a physician who doesn't know you. And, you know, I mean, that happens a lot in California. It's not an ideal situation. What we really want is we, I mean, I don't, I don't, I am completely neutral on recreational marijuana, but I am passionate about medical marijuana. And medical marijuana is very, very, very different from recreational. It's not a one size fits all, you know, compound. What's really needed is somebody, you know, somebody who understands the disease and understands the chemistry. So, you know, maybe Grace, you can talk to the different kinds of compounds that are in this plant. And, you know, this was actually one of the primary medical strategies for over 100 years in the United States. You know, it's, it, it was used for over 100 years before it was, you know, ultimately out, you know, out of favor, you know, out of fashion. So.
Well, so I guess, right, if a dispensary cannot compound, if compounding is part of manufacturing, you would need to allow that so that you could get in the different strains, because different strains will have different amounts of, it's not just THC, right? And it's not just CBD, there's CB, CBN, and you can go down the alphabet of CB, E, F, G, I, and whatever. So, so you are going to get different potencies and then different amounts. And so compounding just means the way you're combining it and whether you're combining leaf or oil or, you know, so whatever parts of that plant. So, so I guess if, if a dispensary would not be able to compound, I mean, I wish we had somebody like, you know, a pharmacist like Matt Lavin in here or a physician like Mortensen or somebody else. Because like the, the doctors are going to write a prescription, but it will be for like the wasting disease that her sister experienced, not having an appetite with chemo or it'll be with, you know, the epilepsy or, you know, some other seizure disorder. So. So like the doctors and, you know, so the pharmacists, that's what pharmacists do. They do a lot of compounding with medications to make them more specific for that patient. So I guess that is, the question is, is compounding part of manufacturing? And if so, then, then you do need that component to have an effective cure.
Are we talking about numerous different licensing?
There would be.
I mean, it would have to in order to cover. Your dispensary is one, but then you get into.
You've got manufacturing, testing and production.
Yeah.
And growing.
So production is growing, right? And there's so many different seed varieties, right? I mean, that's finally now that it's legal, we can start testing the seeds. There's been some, you know, illegal testing behind the scenes because they just know it's such an important medicine. But now they can actually do it. There's a lot going on in Minnesota with the testing of the seeds. So, yeah, so if you're only dispensing and you're not, I don't know, it's complicated. But if you want to start with dispensing, it would only provide a one size fits all and that's concerning. So.
Why is that? Couldn't somebody order it? What?
Yeah. So if you needed, so say you're looking for sativa, blah, blah, blah for this person and, but then you wanted to combine it. So you're just ordering in one variety, but you needed to dilute it or do something to create the, the medicine. You might have to alter what you got in. I don't know. I've never been on that side. I've worked with CBD with a place in Kentucky. But that's, and I, so by adding it to different like honey and things, that's compounding. So, I don't know. I, I'm just afraid of that limitation being just a dispensary. I actually don't know that much about the business side of it, but just nursing. You would not want to be, you would not want to have your license reneged for helping somebody. So if, if it took, if you had to jump through these hoops later in order to get somebody that medication that they needed, where if you could just provide it from the start saying manufacturing and maybe define that as compounding in-house, I, I think that would be prudent. So then people, it, it makes it worth it, right? And, and solves a lot of headaches before you start. So just being a dispensary might not cut it.
But how, how do we know if it's a dispensary? Because these, to, to run a dispensary, you don't have to be a trained medical professional, professional, like, like a pharmacist would.
Right.
So how do we know? So, so I have no idea how I would compound it, but nothing says I can't start.
Right.
That could be a problem.
Yeah, that's what I'm going, the different licensing.
You could come to me and say, I need this. I'll be like, okay, there you go. It might not even be close to what you want.
Well, if you can, maybe you, maybe the, maybe the rules should be more on who you're going to license, but not limit whether they can be part of that manufacturing. And, and hopefully eventually Clay County will get into production as well, but.
Our biggest problem is who, who's going to police for manufact, manufacturing or the dispensary? We don't have, we don't have the resources. We definitely don't have the knowledge.
I think Drew, Drew knows something about this.
All great ideas, short term. We don't have time to figure all that out over the next, I'm not, to me, just to anybody. We got about six weeks to get this done. We got to have something in place by when the Department of Health puts out their rules. It's wet clay. We can come back to it. No problem doing that kind of work.
Definitely. This isn't set in stone.
Just be careful, right? I mean, like, so you say you like rush past that. I mean, hopefully you have time to discuss whether it's, you can add that manufacturing over the next six weeks. Because I am afraid if you, yeah, it's wet clay, but, but that stuff will stick around for 10 years. So. And, and you might get into other headaches. Hopefully you've got some time to discuss it, a week or so? A month? Not a month?
Not a month. And like I say, legislature's coming back.
Two weeks?
When you talk about this, I wonder, because you got the, the testing. Does testing take place before it gets to dispensary? For the products? And does all? So let's say whatever you, you blend at the dispensary. Does that have to get tested before it's distributed? Or does the raw material have to be tested before it comes to?
If you're a manufacturer, you'd probably have like a spectrophotometer and other ways to measure and analyze before you, yeah. So that would be part of the manufacturer. So if you did, if you allowed that dispenser to be the manufacturer, I think you're going to get a more quality actual medicine than just some random person offering recreational under the.
Yeah. And I, I think Grace is getting at the problem with the typical dispensary. You know, in California, there's a, there's a real difference, right? There's, there's these recreational places and they're exactly what, you know, in your imagination, you would imagine. But dispensaries are really, really, really different, right? So they're very high security. You've got to have a card to come in. You're, you're literally not allowed in the door without a card. And, yeah, exactly. I saw that in the, in the ordinance and that was really, that was very, very well done. It mimics perfectly the systems that I've seen work really well. And a, a good dispensary, I mean, there are some dispensaries that just sell product off the shelf that's, you know, mass manufactured, right? But a good dispensary has somebody on the staff who has some medical background and is able to, you know, respond to the particular disease that somebody has and provide medicine especially for that. And so, you know, a, a lot has to do with which compounds are included. I mean, the other issue is the, you know, what, what most sort of big dispensaries, you know, have is, you know, pills and gummies and, you know, so on. But for somebody like my sister, you know, she couldn't eat. And so if, if you're having chemo, right, you, you, you can't do that. It doesn't work. People with multiple sclerosis, when they're having a movement crisis, they actually have a spray that they use that's compounded for them. And there is, there are reams of published studies in reputable journals about the relief that certain compounds in cannabis give to people with multiple sclerosis. It, you know, it, for people with MS, it's like a miracle drug. It really, really works. And you can get on the National Institute of Health, the federal National Institute of Health website, and you can see all the studies that they've funded. And it's, it's quite, it's quite remarkable. So, but, but a run of the mill dispensary is not going to have that. You need, you know, you need to have somebody who understands the disease and who understands the, the, the chemistry and what will help people with that particular ailment. Same thing with Parkinson's. I mean, run of the mill marijuana was a disaster, right? All, first of all, you know, like the mains, the main problem in Parkinson's is rigidity. You can't move. So you take a drug to help you move and the drug helps you move. And then all of a sudden you can't control your movements. And, and so very specifically, if all you take is THC, you can't move again. It's like you never took the drug. But if you take a very specific compound that includes CBD, a very, very small amount of THC, not enough so you'd feel it, but enough to, apparently it enhances the effect of CBD. It works. It's like, it, it's like remarkable. And if you take a pill, it takes an hour and a half to work. When you have Parkinson's, that's an hour and a half of suffering. But if you have a good dispensary with somebody who really knows how to compound, they will make an extract that you can put onto your tongue and it, it absorbs sublingually. And so 15 minutes later, you can actually sit still. You can hold a cup of coffee.
So if you don't have much time, is there anything I can do to help with research for you guys as far as the difference between manufacturing and dispensing and, and what the county might be facing or?
The biggest conflicts, we got to work within our state laws on this and either changing almost every other week. And we're not getting a lot of information. I can go to the South Dakota Department of Health website. I can see what they put out as their latest draft. Yeah. So I, my understanding was the manufacturing and the dispensaries had to be separate according to South Dakota Department of Health rules. I don't know that as a fact.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to, to call Pierre.
Sure. And I, yeah.
The dispensary is the one we have to address right now.
Yeah, yeah. That's one according to law we got to do right now.
Just letting everything go willy nilly and in-home. What is it? In-home occup?
Home occupation.
Home occupation is not allowed.
Not yet, no.
Yeah. And most places they don't, so they, they require for any kind of a marijuana operation, any phase, any of those four phases all require security. And it, and it, it does. I mean, what, what basically happens is that they often reside in industrial parks or outside of, you know, a central, central area. The ci, you know, the city of Vermillion is, I've, I've read a lot of their stuff and they're on track to allow pretty much everything. And so, so that's, that, that's a good thing. But a lot of people in this county don't live in the city of Vermillion and they don't own property here. And, you know, they own property elsewhere. They grow elsewhere. You know, it's a, it, it's, it's, it is a business in the same way as a pharmacy is a business and it, it will support a family. And, and so I, you know, I, I think, I know of three individuals who don't live in the city, who are considering, and, and all of them are, are fine, upstanding citizens and reputable people with a lot of capital, that they're willing to invest to do this. But if we disallow it.
And is that in the joint jurisdiction area too?
No.
Okay.
No, not in joint jurisdiction. Yeah, they're not in joint jurisdiction. Yeah. But, but we're saying no to them.
Today. Eventually it's going to happen. We just need to get our minds, our heads wrapped around how this is going to affect law enforcement. Because we're looking at outside of the city of Vermillion, there'll be at least four dispensaries. Could possibly be. Because you'll have one in Irene, one in Wakanda, one in the county and one in joint jurisdiction that the Sheriff's Department has to police.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think, I, I, so I, I, I think when you go to a dispensary in California, you know, it's not a, I mean, they're not policing problems in this sense, right? That they police themselves. They have databases. They are really, really, really strict. They are absolutely no nonsense. When you.
But when you get a pile of cash laying around and somebody knows it, that's, that's our problem. I'm, I'm not concerned that there's marijuana sitting in the store. That's not what the people are going to be after. It's the pile of cash that they can't go to a bank with right now.
Yeah. Well, they, they, they do have, they do have places to bank. I mean, in, in other words.
And it might not be cash, right? I mean, into Venmo, it's.
It's credit cards. It's a credit card business now.
It goes through insurance, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's a credit card business. I mean, you, you don't see, you don't see a lot of cash. I mean, I, I, I don't think I've ever seen cash in a, yeah, I, I think recreational facilities are more likely to have cash going back and forth, but this is, this is a credit card business. Yeah.
But we're not going to have two sets of rules.
But, okay, how, right. But what we're doing here is we're talking about having one set of rules for most retail establishments, but having this particular retail establishment have a different set of rules. And I know that the argument here is that somehow marijuana is different. I would argue that very much like Davis Pharmacy, right? What does Davis Pharmacy do, right? They, they take in a way more cash than a dispensary is going to take in in a day. And we don't worry about them being a police problem. Well, if anything, these places are more secure than Davis Pharmacy because they're required to be by law.
But Davis Pharmacy can go to the bank every day.
Well, and, you know, the, the, you know, the, the dispensaries can go to the credit union. Well, I, I know that credit unions across the country, I don't know about this state, but I know the credit unions across the country have become the depository institutions for, you know, for, for marijuana. And, and I, I know this from a lobbyist from the banking industry who is, is really kind of trying to figure out how banks can begin to serve the industry because they've been cut out so far. And they would like not to be cut out.
Guess I'm confused about your concern. So it's like if it's, if it is a business and you. So it's like if it's, if it is a business and you have a license and it's and it's the medical part of it and it's being prescribed. So in South Dakota, it has to be prescribed. It has to be prescribed for certain conditions only. That was the memo we got through Sanford and it explains it quite well. I mean, and and some insurances will cover that.
They don't. Treat it like a liquor license, kind of.
But I.
I don't know if the other business would have been a bond of a charged license.
Yeah, but I, well, you know, pharmacies have to be licensed, right? And and so.
Pharmacy license that the county deals with.
Yeah, but I. Yeah, but I but I would argue that we ought to treat it like a pharmacy license.
A pharmacy?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I would assume so. The pharmacist has to be certified.
Anything in here I did not for certification?
Only through the state. There's the the county permit and then the state permit.
The state requires proof of certification.
Do we know that yet?
That there's going to be a state permit?
No, we know there's going to be a state permit, but what type of certification they're asking for?
Oh, not a clue. Yeah, I I've just.
That's the part that scares me more than whether there's one or five or whatever. I want to know that. I have problem that the background check is crossed out or is it somewhere else?
This would be, this would be much simpler if the pharmacist could handle it.
Yes, it would. And I wish, and I wish, I wish that were the case. I mean, that is, that is my, my fondest wish is that all of this would be available in local pharmacies. And I suspect that sooner or later that's going to happen. But in the meantime, in this county, we have people with Parkinson's disease, with epilepsy, you know, with multiple sclerosis. We we do a big business in cancer, right? And 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 these people cannot get relief. And, you know, I I'll just bear with me for one more story, which is one of the most important people in my life was the woman who became nanny to our children, who became part of our family. And when she had cancer and was so nauseated by chemo that she couldn't eat, she was given something called Compazine, which is the standard medication for chemo-associated nausea. And it so zonked her out that she laid in bed, week after week, developed pneumonia and died when she really didn't have to. And, you know, I have to tell you that 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 was the moment at which I thought, oh, this is just so wrong. This is just so wrong. I sat with her every day, week after week after week as she couldn't get out of bed because she was taking a medication that made her, all she wanted to do was sleep. So we have something better for people with cancer and it saves lives. And I I think we have to think of medical marijuana as something that saves lives, that makes a a real difference in quality of life for people who are very ill. And we need to make it so that it's not underground, so that it's not, you know, so that so 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 that people don't have to, you know, have somebody who at home compounds for them while they're sick because they can't get it any other way. We need, we we need to have it in the sunlight, you know, we need for it to be transparent and we need for it to work. We need a workable system.
I am happy to by next Monday to to see what I can come up with, working with Department of Health as far as the manufact, rules for the manufacturing and the certification for the dispenser. So I have time to do that.
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. Sometimes it's helpful to go back to that statutory definition on things. One of the the deals I would remind everybody of is in statute. So in order for someone to get a medicinal card, they have to have received it from someone who is a practitioner by statute, that is a physician who is licensed with the authority to prescribe drugs to humans. In relation to a non-resident cardholder, the term means a person who is licensed with the authority to prescribe drugs to humans in the state of the patient's residence. So it has to be a licensed physician. I think that is one safeguard regarding obtaining the card. So, I mean, we kind of end up mixing and I and I understand why I do it too. Those who are going to get their medicinal card, licensing facilities, those types of things. So I just, I wanted to note that as far as who's going to be doing this, it would be far easier if if when we get to this, it could be a pharmacist. Because I do think that there are differences with security, with regulation within their own industry, with regulation from the state, the federal government. There's a lot of requirements for pharmacies and we're going to have to police this ourselves as a state because the federal government has not put those safeguards into place regarding quality of products and and manufacturing, all of those things. So the statutes, interestingly enough, aren't as clear. So the explanation you guys are giving about that compounding, that seems to be a very technical term that might have been good or maybe it was intentional, I don't know, to have included in the statutory definition of manufacturing. So our statutory definition at the state level right now, and I don't know if this will come with legislative change, might be something for people with knowledge to to look at, is, so this is in thirty-four twenty G one is the definition section. So SCCL thirty-four dash twenty G dash one includes all the definitions of of the various things we're talking about. So under subsection four, it defines cannabis product manufacturing facility as an entity registered with the department pursuant to this chapter that acquires, possesses, manufactures, delivers, transfers, transports, supplies or sells cannabis products to a medical cannabis dispensary. So that manufacturer's definition is the only thing we get close to even compounding. And that might be a legislative update for the future of what do we mean by manufacturing? Because, like you said, that's, that is very different. But I think that's why we get to this point where it's like, well, recreational marijuana, I mean, that seems very broad of a term. And then getting into with the way it's defined right now, getting into medical cannabis dispensary. And I didn't find a statute on it offhand, but I I'm about certain, and I'm just glad you said it, Drew. You cannot have all four types, like you can't be one. They they have to be separate. So if we are going to look into a manufacturing entity, it has to be, I don't want to say off-site, but it has to be a different facility than a dispensary. And I couldn't find that right offhand, but I I swear I recall that from our review at State Attorney Convention as well. And so medical cannabis dispensary is an entity registered with the department that acquires, possesses, stores, delivers, transfers, transports, sells, supplies or dispenses cannabis, cannabis products, et cetera. So it, there is that distinguishing difference, as as you guys have noted, with making the product cannot be the same facility. And then there's the testing facility. That is very clear, it has to be. So testing the quality of that product, testing and verifying those things has to be a separate entity. So I think there's some work to be done on that. I do think for those with specific knowledge on this, I don't know where our legislature is at with this, but there's going to have to be some updates. So that, to me, I think would be as helpful as anything is reaching out. Because my intention, as we look at the proper language for our ordinances and and I need to regroup with Drew. Drew, I'm sorry about that, that I haven't gotten that done yet. But as I look at our definitional section, I really, I like that we say, you know, as we're looking at here, unless an alternative definition is explicitly stated in this section, this chapter utilizes the definitions of cannabis-related terms, which are defined in thirty-four twenty G one. In my ideal world, I'd like to just stop it right there. Because I think if we go on to define these terms of cannabis and then thirty-four twenty B one gets updated appropriately, so.
Yep, yeah.
We've, yeah, we've said unless explicitly stated, well, now, is it before or after? But then we probably do have to parse out because here, you know, county, Clay County, South Dakota, county commission, the board of county. So there are some that should stay. But, but yeah, I mean, I I just need to get on my radar too and and get it in my schedule for when you guys are meeting for these things and and move back in and learn, I guess, with the rest of us where we need to go on.
Because it's talking about that manufacturing in thirty-four twenty T dash one, can you give a license for manufacture in this county?
At this point, no. If this were to, if this like were to pass as it is right now.
But we could.
Yeah, and it's set up to change very readily. I mean, it's just one number.
Would you just take a commission meeting?
A resolution and yeah.
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 Yeah, what?
For the zoning first and then it comes out.
Yeah.
One other point I'd like to make, though, in reference to what Alexis had said is in most other states, the growing and dispensing often happens in the same building, right? So it's in an industrial park and the growing happens in a contained, locked, secure, alarmed facility. And normally the dispensary is attached to that in the front. So it is normally on the same piece of property and.
And that's why I think this is just all the more important. I mean, Betty, what what you're saying definitely, it it makes sense what you're saying, but that's where I think our legislature needs, I don't know who, if there's work groups or who's working on this. I mean, there's been a conceptual implication.
Yeah, there's a work group.
But and so there is marijuana work group. If they're discussing this, maybe reaching out to members in that regard because that's a rudimentary understanding of what do we need to update? I mean, this was a ninety-six section deal that was put into effect by the voters. So now it's time for our legislators to come in, fine tune and hone that.
Their meeting September.
Okay, great.
Now, I think that already this proposal that Drew has sent us on page three under item C addresses multiple licenses. We may be already anticipating that change that the legislature ought to make. In my opinion, it says, a person or entity who intends to conduct activities which would meet the definition of multiple cannabis establishments must prior to operating such establishments, obtain a license for each class of cannabis establishment which pertain to the intended activities. A person or entity may hold more than one class of license, except where otherwise prohibited. And what the state is saying that they have to be in different facilities, apparently. Maybe we'd have a a building that would have a firewall and two firewalls that could separate each of three different types of entities, you know, manufactured, testing and and dispensary that would be separate, but on the same piece of ground to satisfy state law. But already the proposal that we've got ahead of us proposes that one entity or one person or one legal entity could operate more than one type of med or medical marijuana establishment. And I I think, putting my oar in the water in this part too, I think one part of a background check, check ought to be that there's someone with something that we were to license that would have the kind of expertise that Betty's been talking about. That's what, that's what we need is someone that would be able to do compounding. Like when I go to Davis Drug, there's times where where Matt has to build the medicine that he's going to sell me. There should be nothing more or less than that allowed in this entity. I think we're, we're, we're worried about regulating marijuana because it's been for the last eighty or hundred years, it's been bad stuff. Really, the, the, the object here should be to get substances that can can at least alleviate or cure very serious illnesses to our public. And I think we should be focused on that as best we can. And part of that is to make sure that we have the right employee at least that can do some of this work as Grace has been talking about. And 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 of soapbox.
That'd be interesting to just some look into, I think, from a standpoint of, is that a more stringent, right, requirement than the state statute? So is that something we could implement here in Clay County, even if the state does not? And so I do like the idea of a piece by piece going through this. And so we get in place what we have to and then we really continue to hone and fine tune, you know, the requirements for a manufacturer facility, see what's going to be happening in that regard and and what can we do? And so I've written down a a number of questions. I have insurance establishment requirements and permitting, why or why not? Resident of Clay County to permit, yes or no? I will tell you a cursory review and it's other state case law, but that would make sense. There's at least one federal judge that seemed to indicate that that was potentially unconstitutional. So I I need to look into that further. Why and was it something different with their, with their requirements of their state statute? And then can we require manufacturer facilities to have medical person on staff? Is that a more stringent standard? So could we require it even if state statute doesn't? Anything else you guys want?
The one question I have is a background.
We hit, we were only on like big group. We got a little sidetracked. However, I'll try to, all right, in the Mitchell rules and a couple of other rules, there is the requirement for a county background check. Now, if they go for the state permit, I'm informed that they have to get a DCI background check. I don't know that, I can't confirm that so far. However, do we still want to have a county background check? Andy?
None of the state does it.
It depends what the state asks for.
Yeah, I think I.
See what the state asks for.
I'd want to see proof of what the state. I know landfill operators are under the same kind of thing. And you have to prove whether it be the state license, but with the local, you have to make sure that this person has not been charged and convicted of a felony and da, da, da.
Can we even do a background check at the county level?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, we can?
But, you know, I mean, if they've already just, I mean, I think, I I think that the Phyllis's question is, is, is a good one. What what constitutes a state background check? And we need to understand that because to require them then to have a second background check, that's exactly the same as the first one is a waste of time, it's a waste of money and it's harassment.
But just requiring proof that it it has been done is.
Well, let me. How do I want to phrase it? The way you're saying that, Betty, is let's take the livestock ordinance. Would you be okay if the state just said, this is what you got to do? And why would the county have any say on it?
I think, though, that that's a very, very, very different situation. And I think.
Harassment, right?
Yeah.
As you just said, when you start requiring more of another person.
Yeah, I think what we're talking about here, because we're speaking to the issue on the table right now. I think what we're talking about here is identical checks being done at two different levels and they're very, very specific checks. So I think we need to understand what DCI is doing. Yeah.
I I would just say, yeah, I would be curious to know if Andy knows the answer to this, not to put him on the spot. But, I mean, just contemplating this, I had to do, I think, two fingerprint cards for law license. So both FBI and DCI. So I don't know if there's different things that they're looking for in that regard or what that is. It is interesting and one of the things I think we need to be careful in regard to the background checks, what we're, what we're going to accomplish or what we put into place because there are specific requirements. One of the things I think is preposterous is that it has to be a disqualifying felony offense. And I wanted to look that up as far as whether this is a caregiver statute, but like drug offenses, distribution offenses don't disqualify you from selling or or being a caregiver or anything. I I find that preposterous. I mean, I think we can get the unsavory sort of individuals into the positions of this who are going to be looking to utilize this in a bad fashion. It's violent felony offenses and things of that nature. And so I think those are avenues for potential updates at the legislative level as well. And so I think those are avenues for potential updates at the legislative level as well, but so when we get to this, like, we're not going to be able to regulate this in a fashion that state law allows. If state law allows it, then what are we doing with the background information? Because we might not want certain types of individuals running these facilities, but if state law allows it, there's not much I, I think we can do about it.
We can make it stricter. We just can't make it looser than the state. But we can make it more strict. So if the county wanted to say, and you know, you can't have this type of rapture, we should be able to do that.
Well, and that'd be my thought as well, but then there's a bunch of language that says the state shall not prevent this. The state shall not prevent that. So, you know, making sure that we can't make this impossible for these facilities to operate. So I just want to see, and then I don't know if Andy does know a difference between DCI or FBI background checks?
Yes, I do. You.
Are they different?
No, what you're doing is you're searching different databases. It depends on what you're looking for. When you run those background checks and whether you're talking about a DCI or a county, it's going to be the same thing. I think the, the goal is to make sure that those results are provided to you. Generally, like for what Alexis mentioned, it's getting a law license similar to what a school bus driver is going to go through, teacher, dental hygienist, law enforcement officer. You're going to do a fingerprint based background check where we will, rather than just go with the information off your driver's license, we'll make sure that those fingerprints have never crossed to anybody's desk before. And we'll find out what, what criminal history exists. That itself isn't the background check. That's going to provide you with results and then you would make a decision whether or not that crossed any line. So if you have your, your basis for exclusion being a felony, for example, like for a firearms permit, you don't get one if you have a felony. So I, I will do a fingerprint based background check before considering an application and then, and then not provide the permit if there's a felony. As Alexis mentioned, in this case, there are disqualifying felonies. And so what we'd want to do is find out if those exist. So it's going to be the same thing, whether the DCI does it or we do it. What you would do though, I would still have a requirement at the local level. And if the DCI had run the fingerprint based background check, all we want is to make sure that we have those results, or at least that they have, maybe they've approved it based on that. At the same time, we might see local records that would maybe have some relevance. That is, if there is an exclusion there. For example, on a pistol permit, I would not provide a permit to someone who is habitually intoxicated. And so I would only know that on a local level, which is why those permits go through the local sheriff, because the statute has that. But if there's nothing that disqualifies somebody from getting licensed to sell marijuana dispensary, except for a disqualifying felony, then that's pretty easy to find out. And then it's a yes or no, if it exists or doesn't exist. So, but that's what they're getting at. They want to make sure that there is a fingerprint based background check when they say a state background check. And that, and whether it runs to DCI and FBI, you, you do both every time. And then you get a response back from both. And it'll usually be exactly the same. The FBI and the DCI results, you basically almost like you get two copies because they have the same information on them. But we check them both anyway.
Yeah. So, so is it, you have you, Andy, that it's worth it to require it on both levels?
I, I think so. If, well, that is if you, if you care what other information might be known besides that criminal history. And, you know, I don't think that in this process, you're looking for like what we would do, we do for law enforcement hiring, we do a background investigation. That's not a background check. It's an investigation we call neighbors. And we talk to other people that know that person and find out if they've got the character that we want of working in this job. I don't think you're going to dig that deep. But then again, there might be some other information that might be known that might be relevant. And, and, and that you would provide the, the committee maybe in a, in a private setting. You would need a, you would need a release for that. And I assume that would be a, a, a clause on the application that, that provides that information. We do that with military recruiters. They show up at our, at our door or call us frequently asking for a background check on, and a local background check on, on people they're recruiting. And they could certainly run a, a criminal history check, but they want to know, what else do you know about this guy? And so they'll ask that. And they always provide us a release because our law enforcement information are, that, that information is not public record. And that person has to allow that information to be disseminated. And so you make that part of the application, just like with applying to go in the military or applying for a pistol permit. And I'm sure that that's going to be standard in the application as they submit to that background check. So it, I, I would recommend that you at least have that and, and make sure that there are no surprises. And then you find out that somebody, you know, got a permit that really shouldn't have had one if, if, if you'd only known. But of course, you're not going to know. Law enforcement agency by law enforcement agency, you would have to have that release provided each once. You're only checking that locally. If someone had some sort of issue in, in, in Roberts County, but they came to Clay County and applied for a permit, we wouldn't know what happened in Roberts County unless we asked Roberts County or unless they were arrested, charged with a crime and had their fingerprints taken.
But this application is also going to be a conditional use permit. And the, and it's going to be like a liquor license where they have to renew that license every year. So if anything did come up in that year's timeframe, we could at least address it.
Sure. Or find out that maybe that other issue was ancient history and that's just not who that person is anymore. And, and, and maybe it just doesn't become an issue, even if you find out later. So, so that's always a good thing. We see that with the liquor licenses. We look into places that we've been having, operating in the county and, and really don't see any problems there. And I imagine it'll be a lot like that.
Yeah, that, that makes sense to me. Thank you, Andy.
And I, I would recommend asking the question, doing, doing the, the check. It's, you should, should be aware that the, the process of a fingerprint based background check does cost $43.25. That you submit that with the fingerprints to the, the DCI, they'll take it from there, including the FBI part and give you your response. So you'd have to, you'd want to make the, the applicant pay that fee, make that part of the fee.
Or is that already included in the $5,000?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. That's the.
You have to pay it separately.
Yeah. Yeah. In the, in the, in the pistol permit process that requires that, there's a fee for the, the application for the permit, but there's also, they provide us a check for $43.25 payable to the DCI. And we submit that along with it, because otherwise the county has to pay that.
Because it'll be, we'll have to make it the $5,000 plus any applicable fees. Because there'll be the conditional use permit fee, there'll be the publishing, anything that might go along with it. That way it'll just cover it.
So Andy, does the background investigation cover financial also?
The background investigation we do for law enforcement officers does. We do a, we do a, you know, a credit check. And we, we try to dig pretty deep and we definitely do the credit check. And I, I don't know if that would be relevant in this case, because not to say it's not relevant, but would it be exclusionary? You know, if you could, if you could deny the permit based on their, on their credit history, that's fine. But if you wouldn't, then I don't know if it matters. But that's, that's up to those that are doing this. I, it, but it definitely, we do it for, for hiring a deputy sheriff or a police officer.
You don't want someone in there who has a negative credit dealing with money number.
Yeah, but it's their own business. So if they want to embezzle from themselves.
And again, they're embezzling from the public.
Well, that would have been a, that would have been a prosecutable crime that, and you would have that. I, I don't know if I would, I, I don't know how you would establish the line that had been crossed in a credit sense, unless you have a, a credit score criteria or something like that. If they have 25 open credit accounts, is that, you know, is that across the line? Or, you know, I, I don't know how you would say their credit's too bad.
I'm more thinking on the fellow who was hornswoggled Brookings with the fish hatchery or whatever it was of which he raised the money to.
But then that's, that's civil. I don't know how, I mean, because you could come in with a good credit rating and, and still do it. You can have all the money in the world and just embezzle somebody else's money. Because we can't ask those questions. I know Andy can, but when you go to hire somebody, you can't ask for their credit report, can you?
Yes, you can. It's, if it's a matter of your practice, again, though, there have to be specific releases signed by the applicant to get that credit history information. And, and you, and there's a fee for getting it, but all you get, you don't get a, you don't get a red light or a green light. You get a report that you have to, have to evaluate and decide whether or not this person's meets your criteria. So you'd have to set a criteria. And, and of course, hiring a, a deputy or hiring an employee, that criteria could be fluid. You could say, eh, I don't like the looks of this. We'll go with the next applicant. But, um, but in this case here, it's a yes or a no. And unless you have criteria, I don't see the relevance.
Right. Because there's a lot of startup businesses that have terrible credits. And I would hate to hate to cut them out just because.
I, I just don't know what you do.
When you start a business though, you don't have a lot of cash and your credit report might not be very good. Because you've sunk so much in and borrowed so much to, to get going. I don't know. I just hate to have to, I hate to be able to be the financial advisor, be a banker when I'm not loaning any money. Because it's, it's not our money that's being, that's being spent.
It's not. I just want to make sure that these are run very professionally and.
You'll never know that.
Yeah, so trying to think, I, I guess a, a related question would be, you know, if, if somebody had filed bankruptcy four times. Yeah. I, I think that's what Phyllis, Phyllis is getting at. And, you know, the question I think for us is, you know, who, who do we? I mean, who do we want to restrict? Who, who do we want to keep out of the business? And I would argue that the standards here in the ordinance that Drew, Drew proposed are pretty good, right? So if you've misrepresented the facts, no. If you've got a felony that involves moral perpetuity, no. If you violated business operation laws, no.
Phyllis, yeah.
And, 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 and so on. So, yeah, I mean, I, I think that covers it. And, and I agree with Travis that we, we can't.
Can't go further.
Yeah, I mean, we, 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 we're not a bank. And, you know, we're not going to try to do that, but I think Andy's right that it's probably worth it to, you know, to include that in, you know, in a background check to see, you know, if, has somebody had like, you know, do they have a credit rating of zero because they've just, they've just declared bankruptcy? They don't have a penny and they're, you know, I, so I, I think what Andy's getting at is we need a whole picture of, of, of a human. And we decide whether we trust them, you know, to, to, to run, to run this business. I mean, one question I have for Andy though, it's a follow up is, is if, if, if the state requires DCI to do a background check in order to, and so they pay their $43 and whatever, and then are we going to then require them to pay the $43 for DCI to do a second background check? Is, I, I, I'm hope, I'm just not clear.
If that had been done, that we could probably just verify that there'd been no, no events that would exclude them. You know, for example, you know, I, I'm not sure what, when you say the state requiring, I assume the State Department of Revenue? Or?
No, I think it's the Department of, isn't it the Department of Health? I think the Department of Health is the controlling entity for dispensaries and for the.
If they had a, if they were, they're going to be looking for some threshold, some guarantee that there had been no felony convictions for these offenses. And then, and if that's the same disqualifiers that we have, then knowing that they've already jumped that hurdle, then no, I don't see why we would need to do that. We check our local records and tell you that there's no, that there's no negative information in there and you're, and you're good to go. But if we have different, different issues than the state might have, then we probably need to get that, that same result. Now, that, nothing's saying that we couldn't get those results submitted to us. When you do the, when you do the fingerprint based background check, you tell, you state on that where those responses go. Essentially, the, the applicant, you know, we fill the cards out for them because, you know, they don't, they don't know. And, but they, they sign it and that what it does, it says, provide the Clay County Sheriff with the results of this. Or if it's the school asking for a high school teacher, then those, those results don't come to us. We don't interpret them. They go straight to the school administration and they interpret the results. It's whoever requests the, the, the background check is who those results go to. But the applicant says that. I don't see any reason they couldn't go to both parties.
Okay, that, that's really helpful. So, so maybe what we need to really understand is what, you know, is, is how, we need to understand how the process is going to flow.
Sure. And if you have the same, if you have the same guideline, if, if, if the, if the, the bar is set at no disqualifying felonies, then, and we have that same, same bar set at the same point, then there would be no reason to do that again. And knowing that the permit had been, been already permitted at that state level, then we know it's been done.
Yeah. Is, is there anybody at DCI that, that Andy, that you could check in with to, to find out, you know, how, how we can sort of nest these two processes together?
Sure. Yeah, I can do that. I'm, I'm going to bet they're going to say, gee, I don't know. We're working our way through this ourselves. So, but yeah, we, we deal with the ID section up there regularly on our pistol permits is the most common thing. Pistol permits and our own applicants are where we get the responses back. But we do fingerprints regularly here at the office. I mean, a lot. And, but most of them are for commercial CDLs and dental hygienists, teachers and other, other applicants. And we never see those. We just, we just take their fingerprints and sign the card and hand them back to the applicant. And so what happens from there? I don't know. But, but yeah, I can find out what will happen with these ones.
Yeah, that would be great because it's also possible that it comes to us first, right?
We want them to go to the state.
We want them to go to the state first. No, yeah. So, so Drew, because it looked to me from reading everything, I mean, there's so much conflicting information now, but from reading, it sure looked to me like they, they come to us first and then to the state, but I.
That's was my understanding.
They need to go to the state first.
Well, so here's, here's what I was going to reference us to that may or may not answer some of these questions. So 3420G55 is application for medical cannabis, cannabis establishment. And if we recall, establishment covers all four. They need an application fee, the application including legal name, physical address, not within a thousand feet of public, private school, blah, blah. Name and date of birth of each principal officer, board member of the proposed medical cannabis establishment and quote, "Any additional information requested by the department." And that's where I think we're in this giant question mark for us of what's the additional information the department's going to require? Background checks, they require background checks by, via statute for a medical card or a non-resident caregiver card or something in that regard. But what are they going to require? So this, this I think would fall under that, any additional information? Because then the next few things are operating procedures consistent with rules for governing. If the city or county where the proposed medical cannabis establishment would be located has enacted zoning restrictions, a sworn statement certifying that proposed medical cannabis establishment does not violate the restrictions. So this is where we get into, they're going to, so from the zoning perspective, they're going to kind of have to get our approval, I think, before they go forward.
They're just going to have to prove that we don't restrict.
Well, within wherever they want to put it. If the city or county where the proposed medical cannabis establishment requires a local registration license or permit, a copy of the registration license or permit. So in order to get it from them, they got to get it from us first, which really is unfortunate as we have this conversation, because then it sounds like they're going to have to get their background. If we want a background check, we're going to have to probably have them do it here first. And then the question would be, could they use that at the state level, vice versa?
Yeah. So Andy, is that something you could talk to the state about if the state does a DCI check? Already, will they, yeah, how, how we might, so it, it sounds like they, they will have to do our check first. So you, you would be doing those background checks and then they would go to the state. Can they use that background check that you've done with DCI? Participation, can they use that to make the state permit decision?
Yeah, I I can check on that. I'm sure that that's probably what they'll do. And and then we'd have to have our own process here is in that your permitting authority. If if those results would go directly to that authority or back to me and then I present them to the permitting authority, whether that's commissioners owning or whoever. Few few things to establish there.
We should just require whatever the state's gonna require for a background check at the county level.
And that's why I'd say, and if they don't pass whatever requirements naturally they need for the state level, then their license with us would become. Well, but this is where I think they kind of got to go through and pay us the five thousand dollars first and go through this entire process in order to get by statute unless that gets updated. I think they've got to go through us first and show proof or the state isn't gonna license.
Which is fine, but as far as our background check, it should mirror what the state's gonna have. Just so that possibly, I guess, I don't even care if they could use the same. At least something won't come up later on the state background check that we didn't know about.
But then we've got to kind of wait, see what the department, and maybe the Department of Health won't even require that. For, I mean, that would seem a bit preposterous when it's in statute requiring it for a card or a caregiver, how they wouldn't require it for the, but.
We can require it, so.
Yeah, we should require it then, no matter what. That's a no brainer.
I just don't want to have any surprises on the state side. If they have to come to us first. And I'd rather have them do the background check before they hand us the five thousand dollars. Okay, I don't, I don't want to spend five thousand dollars to fail a background check.
And then Drew, and I'm sorry, but do we have just a couple of the quick things in statute? Want to make sure that it is covered? Because they have to be at least twenty one. And at least one principal officer, so at least one is a resident of the state. And none of them have had their registration certificate revoked.
That's in there.
Yeah, number six, conference in the number seven is under the age of twenty one. Don't know about if prison is. But I will change that. Okay, all right. So background check, match what the state requirement is, get some criteria. And it sounds like Andy's gonna get that. Next three questions.
No, yes, no.
You're gonna ask for adjournment, right?
All right. So under section twelve, this was in the Mitchell one, I didn't know why it was there, but I left it there. And essentially, it's regulations for the county, I think, the way I read it. No person may engage in any following conduct, use cannabis, drinking while operating machinery. Those sound like they don't apply to a license to me. Why those got put in there? If there's a reason? That should almost be a separate ordinance or maybe not. I I don't know why that was.
So it's saying they can't use cannabis?
On the job, right?
Yeah. Undertaking any tasks under the influence cannabis when doing so would constitute negligence and professional malpractice. Possessing cannabis or otherwise engaged to use cannabis in a correctional facility, smoking cannabis on public transportation, not that we have any, I guess one. Any public place or event that's open to the public or on the property of any cannabis establishment, operating, navigating, or being in the field of control of a motor vehicle, aircraft, train, motorboat while under the influence cannabis. I don't know why that's in there.
It's all in statute. Yeah, I don't know if that's like a, if we took it from municipal origin. You know, there's municipal disorderly conduct and there's state statute disorderly conduct. Sometimes it comes down to a violation as to who gets the fine then. If you get cited under municipal ordinance, the city gets the fine. If you get cited under state statute, then it, so I don't know if that's just carryover from that. That's a really good question.
I'm very, very inclined to remove it. I just wanted to.
And I almost think anything that's in state statute that's subject to change, we might want to just pull out of this. Because I, you know, it's gonna be five years of changes happening. And the more we defer to state statute, I I I think the more reliable our ordinance will be.
And then the last question, well, second to last question, signage and advertising. It had, in the Mitchell one, it had, you can't use marijuana or cannabis or any phrase or symbol on the sign of the building. I took that out, but I just wanted to run the, I can't, that's what it is. But I didn't know if somebody might know a reason why we want.
Yeah, and you know, I think that's, yeah, I and I, yeah. I also think it varies by state. So I I I know, for instance, I I drove through Colorado a few weeks ago. And, you know, next to the the interstate, there's all these big signs, urban cannabis and so on. And then, you know, in other states, clearly, there was, there were, there's no signage at all. So I I I I think states go both ways on that. And I I don't, you know, when 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 somebody gets a medical marijuana recommendation from a doctor, you know, the doctor will tell them, you know, when Larry got his card in California, the physician gave us a list of, you know, all the places in the community, you know, that were available. So, yeah.
Well, and I mean, the our regular ordinance for businesses on what kind of sign you can have is gonna keep it from being a monstrosity.
Good.
I don't see this five story lined up properly.
So.
I can only imagine Denver, I mean, welcome to my high city, stop here and get hired.
Quite a ways from your mic. I was gonna say, before you guys move on too far. Getting back to those issues with the, you know, the essentially the illegal behaviors that mirrored the states. I I agree with Betty. I always like to see you more refer to them rather than duplicate them because when they change, then then yours is out of date. But I think that there might be a good reason that those are in there and that it's it's likely that you wouldn't want license holders to be heavy users of marijuana that are, you know, the kind of people that are getting caught driving under the influence and flying the plane of the influence and and things like that. Where when you come to review that license at the next time and realize that this person, essentially their their dispensary, and you know, we're visualizing, hopefully, I think we're all visualizing a fairly professionally operated facility with people that know what they're doing and have good intentions. But but you could have a dispensary that's, you know, operating out of the trunk of somebody's car if you're not careful. And and we don't want that. We don't want the kind of place where they're using on the premises and and just anything goes there. And for that, for that purpose, if you had disqualifying behavior at the time of the license renewal, you'd be able to disqualify based on that. So it might be in there for that reason that it's it's a disqualifying behavior. But I agree, you don't want to itemize that behavior because as it changes, the state statute changes, you become outdated. In in the pistol permit process, they do something like that, but what they say is I'm kind of looking at some notes here, but it had no violations of chapter twenty three seven and twenty two fourteen or twenty two forty two. And it's got a range of statutes that would disqualify a person from having a permit. And that way, as changes come in those statutes, then you may or may not have to change the other. So I don't know if I would strike all that stuff without considering the purpose that it's in there. But I would, I would make it general and just relate to the state state laws rather than copy them.
So the disqualifier, I mean, you can't use it on site is what it said, right? Now, what happens if that's a chemo patient that owns the business?
They can't use it on site.
So they can't spray their mouth? If they sprayed it at home and went to work, they're under the influence. I don't think that, because we don't stop bar owners from drinking at work.
We don't? I never knew that. No, I'm I'm serious. I really, I never knew that. I just assumed bar owners didn't drink, but no.
But I mean, how would you tell that person, you can't operate the business, but now you got sick?
And there are other levels other than chemo. There's, you know, lack of sleep, which is caused by medical. And if you take some at night, is that going to affect the morning and you're?
If you want to call under the influence or whatever, that's in your system for.
So may maybe we want to ask Drew and Andy to work on that section to rip, you know, make it tight enough. You know, to say like basically misconduct is a disqualifier. And, you know, specifically, whatever it says in statute is a disqualifier. And, you know, any other disqualifier that, I don't know, Alexis filling the language here might make you unsuited to, yeah. So so general, like broader language that, you know, and and I agree about the problem with listing. Because somebody could think of a way to conduct themselves that wasn't listed there, but that is appalling. And their lawyer can then go to court and say, yes, but it's not on the list. Right? So 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 I think we we want more general language there in a in a reference to state statute. Yeah.
And the last question, and Carrie, feel free to chime in here. Who's gonna take the applications?
Oh, interesting.
Well, I'm doing the zoning part.
You just gather the information. How are you? I would just get a spreadsheet and just say, fill this out.
I've got my Adobe forms. I can, yeah, yeah.
Is there a fee for just the form?
Well, the conditional use permit's a hundred bucks.
A hundred bucks.
Well, you gotta do the rezone and then the CUP. Yeah. So there's the the fees for that.
Set fees that are gonna cover this one also.
And that's the, that's the five thousand dollars and then all applicable fees for the permitting.
And the, but the five thousand, you said we weren't gonna charge until they had the background check.
Do the, so the process we have now envisioned.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
So it's it's the five thousand plus all applicable fees. So whatever they have to spend on publishing, the CUP permit, background check, they have to pay all that.
Yeah. So you were just gonna recap the process.
Process. So, yep, potential applicant finds piece of ground. Hopefully matches zoning ordinance. They come in, do the rezone, and then do the CUP. The conditional use permit has two or three, however you think about it, conditions. Condition number one, you gotta get the county permit. Condition two, you gotta get the state permit. And then condition three or whatever, you gotta come back and get your building permit is the final step. You gotta have all three before you can actually build your. Yeah.
Don't you need the building approved, though?
No.
No, I mean, for remodel, we don't require building. That's, I had not thought, I would assume, I would have, in my head, always think of a new building, but you're right, it could be an existing.
Yeah, I mean, it could be a machine ship.
Yeah.
I mean, it, however you want to have your storefront, I don't want to get that far into the weeds of the.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. I gotta rewrite my zoning thing now because I didn't even think of that.
Yeah, but so will the zoning have something in it about security or is that exclusively here?
That the CUP says that you've got to get the county permit and the county permit covers security. The state permit covers security.
Okay.
The CUP is maybe two pages. Now that I got it, yeah, except now Travis is throwing me a curveball. I gotta figure that out. But you're right, you're, I completely missed that. Yeah.
I mean, it could be a house, as long as it's not an occupied.
A residence. Yeah, yeah, yep.
And it sits along a major corner where it gets rezoned commercially.
Yep, yep. Because that was, and I, when we first thought about this, I thought you should get your, like, you were thinking state permit first and then the county permit, then do the rezone and CUP. It would save us a lot of headache, but I think the process, and according to CCO, the process is mostly you gotta start with that rezoning first. And I don't, yeah, personally, I don't like that because, A, the headache for the county and the applicant. But that's the way the system's set up. So that's what we gotta work with.
I suppose they want us to do it so that the state doesn't get hammered with.
Exactly.
Carrie, I noticed you had nothing to add to that. I left the language in there just in case. Good. That's all I got unless anyone has any further thoughts. I hope to get this because this is just the the clay before I've added the water. I gotta get the rest of this kind of worked out because we gotta get it to, gotta get it all worked out for the county level and then joint jurisdiction. Like to take this after the changes to the city commission. Because it's gonna be the city commission and the county commission that do this, and take the zoning to our county zoning board and the city planning and zoning board. Get it done here soon. So next week, hopefully have everything.
This is gonna be a big joint meeting then?
Probably just to get it done, probably gonna do it that way.
And we don't have to wait until our meeting dates either, so whatever, whatever works for you, if it's a Friday or Monday.
I've got to be gone three days next week for a conference and beer. And we got our planning and zoning meeting next Monday. Sometime in that week, I'm gonna shoot for at least getting all the boards to look at it in September, sometime going for approval. So we gotta get it done by whenever the Department of Health decides they're gonna publish their rules.
So we don't have a meeting until three weeks for planning and zoning, right, on the thirtieth?
Yes.
So you're gone three days next week and then we've got a whole other week where we don't do anything and then Monday.
No, it's the the week after. Isn't the second?
Three weeks from last night is the regular planning and zoning meeting.
You're right, I got another weekend there. I might be able to get it in front of the city boards that week of the twenty third. And then show it to the county board, county planning zoning on that next Monday. Yeah. Yeah, I didn't know I had another weekend there, you're right. Yep. Yeah, that that we should be able, hopefully, first or second week of September to get it up. So, I'll give you another.
Yeah, you know, and one other thing, Drew, on section fifteen liability and indemnification. And I know Alexis is not here, but I I was gonna suggest maybe a discussion needs to be had about whether it conforms to the Administrative Procedures Act and whether it needs to. You know, I'm, yeah, so so Alexis, one other thing maybe you and Drew can discuss is section fifteen. I was looking at it and thinking about it through the Administrative Procedures Act lens to the section on liability and indemnification. And you know, whether, just to take a closer look at that language and see if it conforms to the Constitution and the APA. Administrative Procedures Act of nineteen forty six. Administrative Procedures Act of nineteen forty-six.
Not fun with that.
Okay, did we get the court-appointed attorney?
I have not gotten the final copy yet. I had it on the agenda in case I did, but I haven't received it.
Do we need, have any discussion for the budget? Do we have anything? Hearing none, the, the grant policy update discussion, is that still going through the handbook?
Is what?
The grant policy update discussion is up.
Yeah, we haven't gone over it for a while. Um, I hadn't been putting it on the agenda because of all the other discussions with the budget and such, taking up so much time. So I just kinda stuck it on there. If we wanna go through more of our draft and keep plugging away at it.
The only thing is I have a meeting I need to go to, so.
I do too. I have one at noon.
We can skip over that and pick it up another time. Um, I'll probably just kinda stick it on the agenda here or there, if it looks like the meeting might go short, just to keep plugging away at it, try to get it.
That'll work. Does anybody have anything else?
The cybersecurity testing?
Oh, sorry. Why did I miss that?
Yeah, it's way down there. After the.
Oh.
Yeah, it's first come, first served, so I'm kinda thinking we oughta go for it.
Ericsson's didn't have any concerns with it, correct?
Um, I did not get ahold of them. I will, I will talk to them. I can't imagine that they would have any issue with it.
I'm okay with it as long as they're.
Basically making our network better, so.
Yeah, so who should be the lead person for that?
I can work with them.
That'd be great.
Vouchers. Did everybody take the chance to read those?
Yeah, I move approval.
Oh, second.
Have a motion and a second and further discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Uh, yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. That's everything on the budget, on the agenda.
Oh, I will move that we adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, there isn't a matter. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah, only thing.
Thank you, guys.
Would Betty like to serve ice cream instead of me?
Oh, that's right, that's Friday.
Oh, what's Friday?
At the fair.
The commissioners serve ice cream to the public.
It's during the community meal.
This is the first I've heard of it.
That's on Thursday. We're doing this Friday, Dick.
Oh, 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 yes, you're right.
What time on Friday?
Ice cream social five is Friday at five in the vendor building. From my understanding, the vendor building is Clover Hall.
Thank you. Yeah, I can do that. Great.
And I, I guess I could volunteer for that and see how my, my arm holds out with hard ice cream.
Well, they're not using the same ice cream they had then.
They're going to gallons rather than the, the big tubs.
Oh, yes, yes. That's probably gonna be better.
Hope so.
I wind, but.
Yeah, now you're not showing up.
Right, I know.